It's not in hand. It's not in hand, welcome to Commissar's Court. We're going to start with roll call. Commissioner Yower?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
Judge Shaw here. Commissioner Schindler?
Here.
Commissioner Hamel?
Here.
Ms. Leesman, County Clerk Poppa? Here. Please stand and join us at the Judiciary State. Deputy Father, we ask that you be with us as we make decisions for the county today and that we make the best decisions for Carons County. We thank you for the rain, it was a blessing, and we ask that you bless our troops wherever they may be. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait, let's get to that part, I'm just getting a trailer through. Okay, the next item on the agenda number seven is to review and re-correct Commissioners' Court minutes for the month of September 2011, seven thirteen, nineteen twenty, and thirty, and a motion to accept minutes after review and re-correction. Does anybody have any corrections? No, all good? I make the motion that we accept the minutes for September seventeen, thirteen, nineteen twenty, and thirty.
All in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda, can you read this? Is number eight, to open discuss, consider proposals for janitorial services for the offices on the square to Tim West Calvert, Mind City, Texas. Each proposal submitted will be allowed ten minutes for discussion and explanation of services. That is Luana. The first bit is from King Carpet Cleaning, and the janitorial agreement on this one says, "King Carpet Cleaning will hereby provide janitorial duties such as sweeping, mopping, vacuum, dusting, cleaning windows or door entrances in offices only, in outdoor frame based boards, and maintaining restroom sanitary and floor three on the offices of the square." And for a total, it looks like it says one employee, one day, seven hours per day, seven hours per week, at eight dollars, fifty-six dollars weekly. Oh, that's three employees. But per employee, the cost is seven hours per day, I mean, that'd be seven hours per day, and three times, three employees per day. And the total is nine sixty-seven twenty-four a month.
Is that bi-monthly, or?
None.
We're going to have it done once or twice a month?
Are they here? Because I'm going to let him talk. Did anybody show up from King Carpet? Hold on, I'll give it. Then the other one is going to be from A Cleaner Zone, and this one says, "A Cleaner Zone will provide a general surface cleaning bi-weekly, which will include the following services: interior window washing, dusting and wipe down of all surfaces, including counters, tables, chairs, and furniture; our carpet will be vacuumed spot treated as necessary; tile and laminate flooring will be swept and mopped; bathroom surfaces will be disinfected." And in addition, "A Cleaner Zone will provide a de-cleanings every six months, will include the following services: our carpets will be shampooed; all tile and laminate flooring will be polished; baseboards will be cleaned; exterior window washing, light fixtures dusted and cleaned." And this was by Matt Garcia, and a total bid price for everything that's said here for thirteen five. I will let him explain how that will be broken down if he's here. Are you here, Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is anybody from King Carpet here? Matt, you want to, you want to talk to us about your proposal?
Sure.
Do you want to look at this?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Tracy. We're looking at five weekends. I don't know how that one would be done. We can do it monthly, bi-weekly, however it would be done. Broken down, we'll have three people that will come in, we're looking to do it twice a day, I mean, twice a week. Probably going to do eight hours, four hours one day, four hours another. And it will be, like I said, every two weeks. Other than that, it's pretty much what we're going to do. On the daily show, we prefer Monday, weekends, nights. I don't know how you would like that. That's up to y'all. And I'm willing to do whatever, whatever else does need to be done, as in, if I've missed anything, let me know, because I'm going to put it in.
That polishing of the floors, is that like wax, or?
Well, we have our machines, and of course, it comes with its own little mixture. I don't really know. I, it's probably just going to go for wax and all that. I'll make sure it tues the floor, it does not mess up. I'll make sure it'll do those floors. If not, I'll just get it, make sure that actually will comply with those floors.
What was the price on thirteen five? Thirteen five, now?
It'll be, well, that's the year price.
For the year?
Yeah.
That's bi-weekly. Bi-weekly.
And you come two times, you come two times, two times a week for four hours?
Two times a week.
Bi-weekly. Three other weeks.
Can y'all have time to look at that and ask more questions?
Basically...
You have the bills.
Since we get eight hours a week, we're going to get out there, four hundred and sixteen hours of labor.
Okay, this is just open discuss and consider. It's not necessarily awarding.
Right, I just wanted these people to be here, because we have, I kind of showed this to Pete, because it says, "One employee, one day, and seven hours per day, seven hours per week. Three employees, six seventy-two, twenty percent tax, insurance, one thirty-four, five hundred dollars, it's a total monthly payment, nine sixty-seven." So, this is what they're going to be charging per month.
Nine sixty-seven. All right. King, you haven't seen it?
Yeah.
We're too crazy.
See, what I, what I didn't understand, Pete, I don't know if you did, but how many times are they going to be there? Is it just seven hours per week? And they got three employees there, and they got, understand what I mean?
Talking about?
On the bottom, on the bottom, word says, "One employee, seven hours," and all that, and then it says, "Three employees." Yeah, we're going to need time to review it. We're going to need time to, I guess, somebody from King and ask them what, I don't exactly understand what they're trying to say now, man. Did you?
No, I don't, and I, I would need time to, no, I couldn't make a decision right now, not to see what, exactly what they're going to do, what you're going to do to the board.
Just, there's more stuff in this package, so I just want y'all to know what to do, just so y'all see. I wanted to get out plenty off. One's bond, this is your bond, Matt?
Yes, ma'am.
Pete, the grout on the tile stuff, it's all been sealed.
It's been sealed, but it needs to have a, not a coat for long.
Just on the grout or on the whole thing? James, weren't you saying that it's easier just to?
You can do the, you can do the whole thing at one time, but there's also spray cans you can do the tile with too, and you have to fluff it up.
I thought we had a third party, because we said two.
Yes, sir.
Third party, it's supposed to be separate. I had phone numbers, I've got to call ten times. You need a fax number, busy, or something, I could get back in touch with them. I'll give them names, or the person's name, which is true.
Make copies for y'all to take, so we got some column and ask questions, and then we'll go back on the agenda.
There's only two bids, so you can have some.
Yes, sir, we've only got two bids. Today, would you get for the bids Friday?
Friday.
Friday, excuse me. I mean, I'll call them too, but you know what I'm saying, so we all have information.
And if you'll provide all your own please, laws, frags, you don't have to provide all that, nothing.
You have any more questions?
No.
Thank you, Matt, appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt. One thing, Matt, did this include paper towels and toilet paper?
No, I didn't.
Not included?
No, but I can supply that.
Pete, are there paper towel dispensers over there that you can go, fill the paper towel dispenser?
I think not.
You can get as many as you want.
So they have the blower in them?
No.
Nowadays, they got that, we got a later, and that gives you about the, tug on them.
There's paper towel dispenser.
There is.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions from Matt, before you go on? Like I said, we'll get you popping to that, you can take it with you, make your own call. Can we skip around a little bit? I see our nurses are out here, and I see Mr. Patterson are out here, and they both have proclamations to do in that way. Do y'all want to go ahead, go ahead, get those done? I see y'all there. Let's move to number twelve. It's presentation of proclamation by Nurses in Touch proclaiming November as National Home Health and Hospice Month, and allow the county judge to execute. And that's, and I have a copy in there, if y'all want to read it.
You can read it.
You can read it.
All right. First of all, I appreciate your time and your business, and you'd be happy to know we're not here asking for money. We just want your signature. My name is Rachel Altekin, I'm the owner, administrator of Nurses in Touch. We've been in your communities for a very long time, twenty-one years plus. And I've got some of my staff with me here today, I'd like to introduce very quickly. Kelly Pavolak is our RN, Peace Manager Field Nurse in our Carons County area, and on down to Beville, wherever else we need her. Irene Valdez is my RN in charge in our Corso office, she is in charge of home health portion of our business there. Anna Rodriguez is our Director of Operations in the Corso office, and over home health. And Charmaine Goss is our Director of Operations for our hospice program. We have over two hundred employees, many of them in this county, so it's really important, I think, for us to recognize home health and hospice, and appreciate your time and your business. Whereas Nurses in Touch Home Health and Community Hospice will join thousands of home care and hospice agencies across the United States, and celebrating the ninth of November twenty eleven as National Home Health and Hospice Month, and whereas home care and hospice services provide high-quality and compassionate healthcare assistance to those in need, especially at times of community or personal healthcare crisis. And whereas home care is the most preferred candidate of healthcare delivery among disabled, elderly, and chronically ill individuals eager to live independently in their own homes as long as they can, as long as possible, as long as possible. And whereas home care in the United States, deploying alternative to hospitalization or other institution-based forms of healthcare for acute and chronic illnesses, providing care to millions of Americans each year. And whereas the network of dedicated home care and hospice professionals and volunteers play a vital role in healthcare delivery and cost savings to citizens. And we ask for your signature, Judge. Now therefore, I, Barbara Van Marishaw, County Judge for Carons County, in recognition thereof, do hereby proclaim November twenty eleven to be National Home Health and Hospice Month. Thank you very much. May I bring this for your signature?
Yes, ma'am. I can go mention this.
All right. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I give the second?
Thank you so much for coming, you guys do it, so, John. Thank you. We appreciate it. The next one that I, we have Jose Patterson back there, let's go to number fourteen, I believe, and it says, "Discuss, consider, act upon memorandum of understanding from San Antonio Food Bank and San Antonio Food Bank Rural Service Territory in an amount of twenty-four thousand dollars for a mobile pantry for twelve months, and authorize the county judge to execute." This is going to be, come on up, Jose. I have it, I remember. You guys can find this in your system. You want me to read it, Jose? You want to read it? You want to?
That's fine, good. First of all, good morning.
Oh, well, thank you. Good morning. Thanks for being here so early. This is something that we approved in budget time, a twenty-four thousand dollar mobile pantry. And here it just says, it says, "Delivering and/or food-related products and services at fifteen-six per pound in a fair and equitable fashion, in times of delivery to be determined by the San Antonio Food Bank in conjunction with a service territory partner, which would be as to ensure quality coordination and logistics for that. The San Antonio Food Bank will submit supporting receipts, backup documentation to the purchase pertaining to delivery of a product, program, and services for the following. Check is the mobile pantry that we agreed on." And then the bottom is going to be what they're, oh, hey, can somebody catch, Ms. Teakin? This, I have her good pen.
Here's a bet.
And I just looked down and saw it, and this is, I'm so sorry, I did not mean to. It says, "The San Antonio Food Bank in Carons County, Texas, agreed to enter into this agreement on October eleventh, two thousand eleven, with the understanding an allocated amount of twenty-four thousand dollars for supporting the purchase of food product and delivery of said program and services. If above points are not met by either party..." Okay. "...are not met by either party, may exercise their right to terminate this agreement. Termination must be submitted in writing with thirty days notice. Food funding allocations made to support this agreement shall not be used for any primary benefit of an individual and/or product must not be subject to any proprietary interest." And I think that's one of the things that we discussed, is there's no limits on this program, anybody can get it right.
Is anybody, anybody that's hungry, that needs food, and that's just it.
And we'll get together if we execute this, and we'll figure out dates.
Yes, ma'am.
You guys are probably going to be in, going to hit every precinct, give each a chance, and I'll be there, and if you guys want to hit your precinct with your, you know, with me, you're more than welcome, that way we can get all this stuff out. And we can, we can kind of monitor it, see how it's working for Carons County, and see if it's something that maybe, you know what I'm saying?
When are we going to start?
We have, this is for twelve months, so if we start this month, or if we start next month, if, if I work with you, we'll get a schedule going.
Oh, yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll sit down, and you can tell me what, what precincts, what areas, and we'll start, the safe, the safe record starts on November to October.
Okay.
That we can plan accordingly, and we can, it'll give us enough time just to be able to notify the community that we're going to be out there on a particular day and time.
And we'll help you do that.
You're going to put it in the paper?
Yep, you see, we'll do that, if you want us to do that. Usually when we give out, we give out, we send out to either to some partner, or to your agency, what we call vouchers, that basically says the time, the date, the location, and has a name of the, of the family or the individual. So when they show up, we have some type of records that we can document, and some, sometimes the officials, commissioners, or city council folks want to know, you know, what families in their precinct were served, et cetera, and of course, any type of information that you would require, or would need. So we, we can work this however you want.
And that's one thing, I'm sorry, go ahead. One thing that we can do also is we can partner with the mayors, and let them know when we're going to be in their towns, because that's equivalent to their precincts, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Each one of them has a mayor in their precinct, and we can get them to help us get, get the information out to their people, and then that way we'll know how the food bank's going, and I'll, I'll be there at each precinct to see, and we can all report back. Would that make sense to you guys?
Yes, and we're going to go precinct by precinct, like, start with precinct one.
Are you one, Carl?
We're going to go in numerical order. Either way, y'all want to do that? We just want to make sure that when we sit down and look at the schedule, so we can make sure that our mobile pantry, and our warehouse, everything gets ready, so we can say, and it gives us enough time to get that mayor and/or your precinct informed, and make your, the families and community, that though, on this particular day, at this particular time, the mobile pantry will be at this location. And so it gives us enough time to distribute those particular documents, and get everything ready, so it can be smooth. And we always ask for folks to volunteer, any folks in the community that want to volunteer and, you know, to help out with the process, you know, we would appreciate it. And that kind, that kind of gets the community engaged in the whole process, and get the firsthand opportunity to see and to be part of the distribution process. And then, from there, we take any type of suggestions and recommendations from the community, to how they think it would work better. Because we all, this is about us, this is about we together, this is about the community. So however best works serves your interest and the interest of the community is what we want to do.
You go to one general location, and it's distributed food there, you don't drive around house to house?
Oh, no, sir. It'll be, hey, we'll go to every part of your county. Versus the major food distribution, it comes like, you want to eat at Kennedy or at Carons, or wherever, in any county, you would have to come there. So this time, we'll go to all, you know, three different sectors of the county.
At one time, it could be...
Go one, two, three, four. And is it one?
We have it in all the, parking lot, you have it in all the market, parking lot, somewhere close.
We can determine a spot for everybody, and I'll ask the mayors to, see where they would want it, so they can get their peoples involved. We can put it on our website, we'll do all kinds of things, just to...
City Hall works.
They'll do it.
They do it.
We'll try to make it as user-friendly as possible. And if there's people that are homebound, maybe some people in the community can help us get food to them if they need it. That's where the volunteers would come to play, or we can take it, we can figure out something to help them get it delivered. And I mean, church is somebody, I mean, once people find out you're doing this, people will come help, people are good helpers.
And we'll have, we'll have our agency department, you know, work on that process, and we'll make contact with some of the organizations in the area, and just say, just give them advice and information, you know, of course, in conjunction with you, whatever it is that you'd like us to work with, your community, just, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, we'll also do, I can do notification by agenda to let you know what day we schedule these, so it'll be on the agenda. If y'all want notification by agenda, so y'all will know. Will that be easier? That way it's documented, we're good to go? Okay, Jose, that'll work for me. Well, I make a motion that we act upon to accept the memorandum of understanding between the San Antonio Food Bank and the San Antonio Food Bank and Rural Services Territory in an amount of twenty-four thousand dollars for a mobile pantry for twelve months. And we're going to start in November, you said? Let's, let's amend that, start in November, can we get it to start in November?
Yes.
Okay. Carl, you got a second? All in favor?
It also, it also authorizes you to execute.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. And to allow me to execute the memorandum. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Hold on one second, and we'll get this to Jose. Jose, please. Was it blue? That way it's a gap of relax. I don't know. Jose, can you, can you send us one after Eric's final?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, we'll, after Carl's finish. All right, Jose, thank you so very much, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, thanks so much. I see in fact, if you're just, can you, if you want to go with the schedule?
We'll get the calendar out, like I said, we can notify them by agenda, and then everybody will know, and we'll get, we'll notify the mayors, I'll send them all emails, and we'll website, we'll do everything we can to get this promoted.
Very good.
Thank you, Jose.
Thank y'all, you have a great day.
Okay, let's go back to number nine now, and it says, "Discussion and announcement of record of new addresses assigned to new annex building and new annex office in the square, two ten West Calvert, and the author is myself." Y'all noticed that initially, everybody was saying that that building was going to be two hundred West Calvert, and when we met with Jimmy over there, Pete, myself, and I guess a couple of the builders, what we decided is, we had one annex that was two hundred East Calvert, and one annex that was two hundred West Calvert, and they were both two hundred annexes, so just to try to space some confusion, we went with two hundred ten on the new one, because we could go two oh two, four, six, eight, ten, and two ten was just the number that Jimmy chose, I guess. And so then we just walked down the building like a, a street, and he would, he said that odds would be on the left-hand side, evens would be on the right-hand side, and so the first building when you walk in is the county clerk's office, so the county clerk got one oh one. The sheriff was on the first one on the right, so he got one oh two. I believe the JP stayed to the right, so she got one oh four. The election office got one oh six, the district judge got one oh seven, ag extension got one oh eight, adult probation got one oh nine. The district clerk got one ten, and DPS got one eleven. Does anybody have any questions?
Do we have signage?
I think Pete's getting signage.
That'll be signed.
Just trying to make that as user-friendly and comfortable. Any questions? Any discussion, anything? The next item on the agenda is number ten, "To discuss, approve, disapprove, joining Direct Energy Services LLC fall pool as a participant through TASPI, and allow the county judge to execute the agreement." That would be Luana. One Luana.
Currently, we are members of TASPI, Department of Services, that are provided by Direct Energy, by AEP, by CPNL, by whoever, and our current rate per kilowatt hour is eight point eight cents. The fall pool that TASPI and Direct Energy negotiated at a twelve-month fixed price would be point zero five five eight six per kilowatt. at a 12-month fixed price would be .05586 per kilowatt hour. Or we could do a 36-month fixed rate at .05995 per kilowatt hour.
Point zero nine nine?
Point zero five nine nine five. I personally think that the 12-month would be the better idea just because we don't know what the energy prices are going to do. I assume the free, the 36-month contract might not be in our best interest.
I don't know, Carl, would you recommend now for 12-month to TASPI, right? Do you know what it's going to do another 12-month? You have six.
I agree with you. I second that motion. And allow me to execute, LaWanna, do you have that with you?
I do.
Okay. That's fine. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the next item on the agenda, come back, LaWanna. Number 11 is to discuss approved, disapproved disconnect, uh, disconnection of utilities, electricity, water, sewer, and telephone at former animal control facility and authorize the county auditor to accomplish such with an effective date of 10/12/11.
As y'all are well aware, the animal control operation has been discontinued. The utilities are in service still at that location. I'm requesting authorization to disconnect, so we will not proceed any further bills.
The cities of Runge, Paul City, and Carls City do not express an interest in operating that.
I haven't heard anything. But if that's the case, then those utilities will be moved out of our name anyway.
I'll make the motion to approve the disconnect in the city water, sewer, telephone, and the four animal control facility. Authorizing the county auditor to accomplish that with an effective date of 10/12/11.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number 13 on the agenda is Discuss, Consider, Act on a Resolution Authorizing the County Grant, the Texas Department of Agriculture Home Delivered Meal Grant Program in the amount of $779.25 and to allow me to execute. And I put on there that the authors were Robert Lucio and myself. What that is, it's our home delivered meal program that we do every year. And y'all see that there's a note on there that says we couldn't do it till October, until after October 1st, because we already had it legited. And it's done through resolution. Any questions or discussion? Anything delicate?
There's a difference in the calls.
Uh, I think that's what we budgeted, was $779.25. We knew it was a...
The question didn't...
Yes, sir. Because we get these prior to budget year. We just can't execute until after October 1st.
Hey, I'll make the motion to act on the resolution authorizing county grant and the Texas Department of Agriculture Home Delivered Meals Grant Program in the amount of $779.25. Authorizing the county judge to execute the current agreement.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 15 on the agenda, that you share. Discuss approved, disapproved, hiring Geraldine Ebermann one year starting salary, and that's author Sheriff Juleka.
Makes this, uh, she's a seasoned, uh, I guess, probably secretary. Kind of robbed her from the oil company. She's paying her about $4,000 more. And I'll, I'll try to start off at a decent salary, which I have it in my budget right now for $23,000 with the raise $227. Make that right. More or less.
Got a one-year stamp?
Yeah, one-year stamp. I just sat back there, talked to an oil person and said, "I give her $14 an hour right now." But I know who she is and what kind of person she is. And like I said, she started, she started running already. I mean, she hit the ground out of the wood one day. So she didn't pick up on all this stuff, because she's used to being in the government offices and working for Texas Department of Agriculture.
You have it budgeted? And I'm okay by it. I make the motion that we allow him to do it.
I seem to remember at budget time, we were given these raises and, and your Senator Ida came up and, you know, there was some discussion about, did she deserve as much money as everybody else was giving them? I think you said, "No, because she's a clerical, she's..."
No, 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 no. We gave her that money. But remember about $600 or $500 or whatever the jailers were giving? We gave all the clerical, we're saying the jailers...
Same money, $2200 across the board.
And what it was?
I mean, I guess it's your, your decision. It's your department, you know, what you want to, but, um, I think it's one of the missed policies. Start off with a person higher than, or do it something else. I'm sure you've got the reason.
Although the monies are in the budget, my concern is, if we have a step schedule and we're going to jump it when we want to, what's the purpose of a step schedule? If we go into salary surveys and that comes back that this should be, and this is a 613, if someone comes in and applies for the job and has experience, the department head's going to have the authority to start him out at a higher than the starting position rates?
It's kind of like a day with a CED troop or a monopolic. You know, their, their expertise is there already. I don't have to train nobody, like, starting somebody out right out of high school or something like that, don't know pretty much what they're doing. This lady went in, within one day, she took over the office.
When did you offer her the job at?
Offered the job at this.
So she accepted it at this, this is what she got?
Because she's making almost $28,000 with the oil company. Here we go, beautiful, oil company. I mean, I could go out here and get somebody 18 years old that I would be having hands on, have to bring people in, trainer. She's right, she's ready to go. We've had, we've got this a lot. You know, we had long discussions about this. And it's kind of, I'm hoping this is one of the last people I have to hire in a long time. Because I've been through a lot of people during the budget crisis, you know, in the last several years. But I got somebody that just stepped in and took over.
From another perspective, let's say we have retirees that are at a higher salary because they've been here a long time. That money will be in the budget. And the department head wants to fill that position. Are they going to have the authority to start a brand-new person with the county, on however much experience they have, out of that existing money that's in the budget?
How's it usually done?
Well, especially like in the sheriff's office, if you have a step schedule, which is what the hopes of the court is, I thought, by a salary survey...
Right, we did ask for a salary survey, but we haven't gotten one.
Right. But what I'm saying, if that's implemented, are we going to stick by that?
We need to get something implemented, but right now, nothing's implemented?
Not for all the other offices, no. There's the, the whole department in the county that has a specified step right now, so Sheriff's Department. I know we discussed it for Rowan Ridge also, because of the issues we pay there.
The way, the way I look at it, Sheriff, I understand you have someone there that qualified for the job and will do the job, just walk in and take care of it and everything. I don't have a problem with it, but I'm always with equality. If someone else, another office comes up and asks for the same thing, I can't sit here and turn them down if I'm going to go with you. If it's here with your office.
That's why I put you on the agenda. That's what I'm trying to do.
I understand, I appreciate that. But y'all understand, guys, I can't, I'm not going to step up. And you know, I fought that with the raises and everything too. I'm not going to step up right here and allow the sheriff to do it and then not allow another, one of the offices to do it. That wouldn't be fair, that would make it wrong.
But I think we had a real problem with Rowan Ridge already doing it. And I think that's what started a lot of the problems. That's why we need, we need a salary survey. We need something done. That's how I look at it. If it's in the budget, he has it budgeted. Until we have something in place, until...
That's what, that's what I meant. I don't have a problem with it, but if another office, somebody quits from another office or goes somewhere else and they come up and they're asking, you know, to pay. That's basically what you're doing, is asking to pay for what the other one left for, right?
Right.
Basically, and I remember we had said that that wasn't going to happen. I remember we said that wasn't going to happen.
And like I said, I came in from jail making more money. She came in to step in when Sylvia left, something with the judge. I brought Ida in and she took a big cut in pay, which there again, she took a cut in pay to help the county out again to take over the secretary position. And nobody grabbed about that. She took about $3,000 of your cut in pay to do it. I said nothing about that. That's kind of where I'm at right now. I've got somebody out, moving on back to the jail. I've got them secretaries that kind of took over out of the box. She did, she came in one day and took over. I don't have to train her, I don't have to have Ida running up there, Sylvia coming back.
She's a qualified person.
She's a qualified person. I could walk away from all this and say, "Good heavens." I won't worry about it. Well, I don't know how that's resolved, but you got to pay people what they're worth. You got to pay people to get a good job. I know that. I have objection.
I'll make the motion to approve it. Hiring Geraldine Ebermann with the one-year starting salary. Since he has it in his budget already, he's a seasoned person.
It's originally from Carls County? House six?
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Motion carries. Okay, did you have any opposed yet? Okay. I'm sorry. The next item on the agenda is number 16. Let's discuss approved, disapproved, sick leave. Full committee members, Priscilla, Vias, for Rowan Ridge. Ida released for the Sheriff's Department. Sylvia, her test for the county judge, turned in January 2012. And that's what, by, this part.
We just had to replace some people that had retired or gone with the county. And Sylvia was already on there, but she was the Sheriff's Department representative, so we needed to move her through county judge, because Judge Kendall was on there. Unless Judge Shaw, you would like to be on it?
No, no, you're good.
And this is just, Priscilla replaces Helmer, I'm sorry, Helmer Wagner. And Ida takes over Sylvia's and Sylvia's taking over Judge Kendall's. And then we have, the other people that are on there now are still a part of the county. So we just needed to update it. And in January, I will be back for new...
So you're good. You're just, you're just doing, making changes.
Right, right. Replacing people that were...
So I make a motion that we accept, that we approve the sick leave full committees, Priscilla for Rowan Ridge, Ida with the sheriff, and Sylvia for the county judge, turned in 2012. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, LaWanna. The next item on the agenda is number 17. And that's to discuss approved, disapproved, Priscilla, two county-owned road and bridge end-up trucks. And the author there is Jeff. Jeff, I didn't put specifics because I wanted you to give us the specifics of those end-up trucks. I wasn't quite sure exactly. I just know you wanted to...
Yeah, those are the two 1985 model trucks. One, we have antifreeze in the, in the motor oil. It's a replacement engine truck that run $13,000. Trucks, you sell them at auction, you get $35,000 to maybe $4,500 for. Run good, they hit. Uh, the cabs are hitting, rodding out on, on the back mounts. The trucks are just old, but they need to be repaired. That's basically what I want to do with them, get rid of them. And then we got that out. We don't have it on here, but I also got a mechanic truck. I want to get rid of that old Ford that was in our precinct too. It's, it's beyond point. Takes it, it's going to cost too much, takes...
I'll put that one on the next one, because I don't think I could have made it for a whole truck. But...
Well, we're a little too late. I think the sheriff said they have to cut off already there.
Yeah, one in Atticotta County is going to be cut off. They're having to sell all of our work units and all my illegal vehicles. They're selling October 24th in Atticotta County in front of the jail.
Can you still make it?
No.
It's too late. Cut off is at first you want.
Well, there's another sale coming up, Farming Department sale coming up down here. I think it's going to take a little bit. And we, we passed them there before we could real go.
All right, if you're with me after this too, just discuss the other one with me after that, in the future, okay?
I said one has antifreeze in the oil, it's on the other one, it's rodded out.
Yeah, that's truck rodding out. The cylinder that's replaced on it, I think the cylinder of that truck is like, the polish rods all messed up on it. And, um, it needs a clutch also. And the rear end's got prying going out in it.
For us, it's beyond repair.
Yeah, it's, it's going to cost, the cylinder's about $2,200 for everything, new rods and everything. And you're going to stick that in a $35,000 truck, it'll make a sense. They're just getting too old.
These are 1985 models.
Yes, sir, hold on.
I'll make the motion. Okay, I don't want to interrupt. I'm sorry. I'll make the motion to approve the sale of two county-owned road and bridge end-up trucks.
All in favor, say aye.
In your motion, you need to capture that you're firing with surplus.
Okay. And I'm motion, I'm going to capture them, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, LaWanna.
Number 18 on the agenda. That's discussion update on status of redistricting maps. I know there's a lot of concern about redistricting. Before we start, I want to show y'all the map that, that Melondo brought us. But please know, this does not affect the election in November. This is for March. We have a lot of questions about that, but... We had to remove the prison population. But what we have in front of Department of Justice is to get the prison population at a call precinct, I think, was it not? So we can have a number of voters in. I don't know if you guys can see this or not, but we're trying to show you. It's kind of hard to read these maps, 'cause everything's in red, and if it's in red, what's taken out, what's in this red area, is gonna become purple, it's not gonna be there, we're gonna have black lines. And as soon as this is approved, can you get that out here? Can you see that on the floor? As soon as this is approved by the Department of Justice, it's going to have black lines, it's not going to have red. It's still in the approval phase, and I believe he said that your precincts were not gonna change, right? Your election poll, none of the election spots come March, we're gonna change, right?
Right.
But there was going to be some voter registration effective, correct? Because Ms. Frankie and Ms. Carol, I mean, Ms. Frankie and Ms. Suesi were there to do the cards part and the precincts part, so they know where to go with their election boxes, their polls. And these are just how they're broke down right now, as soon as we get the maps with the black lines, I told Mulando I would drive up there and I'd get one, I'd get one for Carol and Ms. Frankie, and I would get one for these guys, so they know where their lines are. For anybody that's going to be running for precinct stuff versus countywide stuff, you'll need to know where your markings are. So that's what this is. Okay? But just so y'all know, that redistricting is going on, it is moving forward, we're just waiting for Department of Justice approval. We do have lines, we do have possibilities of change. This map right now, right here, is in Ms. Frankie's office, Tammy's been studying it to see where she's going to be moving cards, and how she's going to be moving them on the streets. So if anybody would like to see this, this is available in Ms. Frankie's office. I have two tiny ones on PDF, they're not color coded and they're very hard to read, but I will get more of these, and I will try to get one to hang in Carol's office and get Ms. Frankie a good one. And I think the other person, James, it's gonna be you, you can see, you wanna get to Ms. Frankie's and see this prior to us getting a new one. Okay? Does anybody have any questions on redistricting, or anything that you wanna add, or questions you wanna ask me, or something I need to ask Mulando? If y'all wanna let me know. But I don't know, I think Ms. Frankie's got some calls to see if this affects November, it does not, right? This affects March, so we're all in good shape, don't panic until, and Ms. Frankie starts panicking, then we start getting. Any questions? Anything else? Like I said, I'll go up there and I'll get those from Mulando. Matt, unless you're just staying to see what you're doing, and if you need to go, if you need to be somewhere, they are gonna call you, just so you know.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I just, you're more than welcome to stay, I just didn't want you to think that we're gonna do something else.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just...
We appreciate having you. Number nineteen on the agenda is to discuss, consider, act on a resolution nominating candidates to serve on the Karnes County Appraisal District Board of Directors for a two-year term beginning January first, two thousand twelve. And authorize me to execute if approved. Look in your folders and find this, where it says Karnes County Appraisal District on the top, and it's the whole letter. We have to do this in October, even, I mean, about odd years to do the nominations, and you'll see a list of the current Karnes County Appraisal District Board of Directors in there on page three. And so, I really was unsure of how we go about doing this, so what I did is I called Mrs. Barnhill, and we talked a couple of times on the phone, and she says usually, unless she's notified otherwise, that the current directors wanna stay, and if anybody knows, notifies us, we can add them to the nominations. And also, on the current directors, we have Ray Rosette, Patrick Pollak, Vinnie Lissy Junior, Larry Demant, and Tracy Whitty. And so if y'all wanted to nominate all those that are still on there, that's fine. And then I had one additional person that expressed interest, and that was Lee Hext. And she said by doing that, we add them to the resolution. So if y'all know anybody that's expressed an interest on being on this type of board or doing something like that, we can add their names to a, to the resolution, which should also be in your package somewhere. And if we didn't, if I didn't print it, I will print it, get you guys a copy of it, y'all want it. But it's not in mine for some reason, how come y'all got all the good stuff? Did you get two of them? That's, you know what, y'all just keep it so y'all know who was on it, that way y'all have that, and I'll just run a copy off the computer, because we did it, we typed it ourselves, so we have it.
Do you get a motion on this?
But you have to make a motion, and we're gonna do it by resolution with those names on it, unless y'all have more names to add, if you have more names to add, just let us know who they are so we can add them, and so we can capture it in the resolution.
We gotta have Lee Hext on.
Please look on your copy of the resolution, I put him on the resolution, I was aware of him at the time.
Is that how you spell it, U G S?
Then, look on, we're not voting today, we're nominating. But just so y'all know, in case anybody asks you, on the last page of this package that you have, on page four, just for your information only, it tells you how many votes, when we get the ballot back, that's when we cast the votes. And I'll have that on the next agenda or so, whenever it's due. It tells you, it says Karnes County, that's us on top.
We have fourteen hundred and four votes, we provide them with...
Well, when we get the ballots back, we'll figure out how to do that, and then that's when we'll do that.
Is that that?
It's usually, I think that's how it's usually done, I'd have to ask Ms. Barnhill, I ask her as we go along, to make sure that I'm getting you guys what I'm getting.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to act on a resolution nominating candidates to serve on the Karnes County Appraisal District Board of Directors for a two-year term beginning January for two thousand twelve over a county judge's execution. On the resolution number two zero one one dash one zero dash one, candidate's name Ray Rosette, Patrick Pollak, Vinnie Lissy Junior, Larry Demant, Tracy Whitty, and Lee Hext.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is number twenty-one, and it says discuss, approve, dis...
Twenty.
Twenty, excuse me. Discussion of possible agreements between Karnes County and Petrohawk Properties, LP and Petrohawk Operating Company, and that's Gary Deska.
Good morning, Commissioner's Court, Judge.
Good morning.
I have a letter that I would like to read. Agenda item eight, on thirteen September two thousand eleven, notice of meeting agenda for Karnes County Commissioners Court, requested a road use agreement between Karnes County Commissioners Court and Petrohawk Properties LP and Petrohawk Operating Company. This action is being improperly directed, and if ever challenged in a court case, will probably be overturned, since Commissioners Court is not the approval authority. The proper channeling for this action is to the county road and bridge administrator. With respect to roads and bridges in Karnes County, the road and bridge administrator is the chief executive officer. He is God of Karnes County roads. Commissioners Court has no authority to make any decisions about roads or bridges in Karnes County. Commissioners Court interface with the road and bridge administrator as threefold. Number one, budgeting. Commissioners Court approves, disapproves, or changes his budget. Number two, Commissioners Court hires and fires the administrator. And number three, Commissioners Court serves as a policy making body for approval of county policies submitted by the road and bridge administrator for approval. These three functions are the only official interface between the road and bridge administrator and the Karnes County Commissioners Court. Now, having said that, our present road and bridge administrator is not administratively competent and not capable of preparing the road use policy for oil and gas entities operating in Karnes County. Someone will have to write a policy for him, so he can submit the policy to Commissioners Court for approval. To digress, when Sammy Smith was our interim road and bridge administrator in two thousand eight and nine, for a total of eleven months, he paved part of County Road three fifty-four with chip seal. Shortly thereafter, the oil boom hit, and County Road three fifty-four became the major thoroughfare for Murphy Oil Company operations while drilling on the Ganta and adjoining properties. An oil company executive approached Sammy Smith and offered to pay eighty percent of the total cost for repaving the road after they finished all of their operations. Sammy Smith unverbally agreed to their offer. Then Sammy Smith was told by one commissioner, that that commissioner had two other commissioners who wanted him removed. Sammy Smith immediately resigned, not wanting to work where he was not wanted. The Kendall Court then immediately appointed one of their own, Jeffrey Beatrix, to fill the position. Mr. Beatrix, on the first days in office, directed his personnel to impound all roads paving equipment behind a locked gate, openly telling the public that there would be no paving of roads as long as he was road and bridge administrator. He also fired all of his supervisors, saying he didn't need them. The supervisor for Murphy Oil later contacted Sammy Smith about repaving County Road three fifty-four, and Sammy redirected him to Jeffrey Beatrix. When the Murphy Oil Company supervisor wrote Jeffrey Beatrix about repaving County Road three fifty-four and paying eighty percent of the cost, Mr. Beatrix told him, we are not paving roads in Karnes County anymore. When this miscarriage of common sense was passed on me by Sammy Smith, I went to personally visit with Judge Alfred Kendall, asking him to intercede and get County Road three fifty-four repaved. No action was taken, and County Road three fifty-four remains today in worse shape than in two thousand nine. Our road and bridge administrator, Jeffrey Beatrix, may be a wonderful heavy equipment operator, but he has no formal administrative skills. Chapter two fifty-four Texas Transportation Code and subchapter D, County Road Department System, states, "If the Commissioners Court is unable to employ a licensed professional engineer, it may employ a county road administrator to perform the duties of the county road engineer." The statute makes no mention of reduced professional capabilities when hiring a county road administrator instead of a licensed engineer. The standards, responsibilities, and administrative requirements remain same. The person hired must have strong cost accounting skills, strong budgeting skills, strong inventory control skills, and strong personnel management skills. The skill requirements were specifically addressed in section two fifty-two, three oh nine, subchapter D of chapter two fifty-two Texas Transportation Code. As Jeffrey Beatrix briefed this court on the serious structural problems with the Walferds Crossing Bridge, several of the pylons are at risk of collapsing, according to the state bridge inspector. I recently asked Mr. Beatrix to put up weight limit signs on County Road one eighty-seven to allow the sheriff's department the opportunity to provide enforcement. He told me he couldn't do that. I asked why, and he said, "If I do that for you, I'll have to do it for everybody in the county." Does this sound like a competent administrator? He has not enacted written county policies as typified by Petrohawk Properties' road agreement request. He does not file monthly, quarterly, or yearly reports with the county court to provide public access of county road improvements. Since being assigned as a road and bridge administrator, it's not completed the governmental accounting service board, GSB thirty-four, report. The state of Texas requires that this report be completed on a annual basis. The county can be expected to pay a hefty fine for his compliance failure to not provide state mandates. Nothing good will happen in Karnes County Road and Bridge Department until a competent, qualified road and bridge administrator replaces Jeffrey Beatrix, and the department is adequately staffed and funded. This is a Commissioners Court responsibility. The oil companies and their servicing companies will continue to destroy our county roads at an alarming pace unless this Commissioners Court immediately and positively acts to institute traffic control over the oil companies and their servicing companies within the county. My recommendations to correct the current deplorable situation include, number one, replace Mr. Jeffrey Beatrix with a school-trained construction engineer or a highly qualified road and bridge administrator, who has a minimum of an accredited master's degree. The starting salary should be over eighty thousand, with yearly three percent increases up to one hundred thousand, tied to actual performance, i.e. percentage of roads upgraded with base, percentage of roads maintained and repaired, percentage of bridges upgraded and budgeted to meet state standards. A good maintenance program of sparing brush and cleaning bouldages must also be included. The standard should be completion of fifteen to twenty-five percent for a year. The goal of a road and bridge administrator should be to pave every county road in Karnes County based on a plan. Number two, adequately fund road and bridge department. A new administrator will need to rehire supervisors and other personnel that Mr. Beatrix has eliminated. A new administrator will have to significantly upgrade salaries for employees to become competitive with the local unit, oil industry. A new supervisor will need to recommend upgrading the percentage of county monies dedicated to the total road and bridge budget, comparable to progressive counties like Wauiliu, Kewa. Number three, oil companies and their servicing companies need to be steered away from existing county roads that are paved and channeled to specific improved and maintained base roads. This can be accomplished by preparing a county policy letter that states that companies like Petrohawk and all other oil-related traffic that uses county roads will be charged their pro-rata share for maintenance of county roads up to ninety percent for paved roads and fifty percent for base roads. The road and bridge administrator must make a quarterly assessment of damage done to county roads and determine the pro-rata share of each oil-related activity that used these roads to be assessed for maintenance costs. These maintenance costs are then passed to the oil company, traffic companies, for collection. Since Murphy Oil was willing to pay eighty percent of the total cost themselves for resurfacing County Road three fifty-four, it is not a stretch to approve cost sharing by all oil-related traffic up to the ninety percent off of paved roads and maintenance, and fifty percent for the cost for maintenance of base roads. This should be the basis for an approved county policy letter from our road and bridge administrator. Such a policy would immediately steer companies away from current county roads that are paved and most costly, and also use specific, less expensive to maintain, base roads. The county road administrator should currently be completing this task by talking with commercial transportation, dispatchers, and company executives. Supervising positions that were terminated by Mr. Beatrix should be budgeted for rehiring, and they can then monitor roads to determine which companies are using which roads. Sheriff's deputies can also patrol more county roads to determine oil-related traffic use. County citizens could be empowered by road administrators to monitor their county roads for oil-related vehicles, turning in a county-approved form for the road and bridge administrator identifying mainly oil-related traffic on their roads. The road and bridge administrator could employ minimum wage data collectors to track all, all-related traffic on county roads. Currently, there is not a traffic control plan or system within Karnes County for oil-related traffic. A plan from the road and bridge administrator is urgently needed to safeguard our roads. Much of the heavy overweight truck traffic on our county roads moves at night, concealed with darkness their overweight trucks. Since the road administrator has failed to properly perform his duties, he should be directed by Commissioners Court to prepare a policy letter and plan for regrouping monies for oil-related traffic use of our county roads to properly maintain our county roads. The road and bridge administrator should be given a maximum of thirty days to provide an oil-related road use maintenance policy letter written on positive county terms and not Petrohawk or other oil-related traffic control, or other industry vendors terms, and a county traffic control plan recommending routes for oil-related traffic control, both to be approved by Commissioners Court. Then Mr. Beatrix should be terminated. Any questions?
Where is that County Road one eighty-seven?
One eighty-seven is the county road that goes beside my house, about three point two miles outside of Corn City, off of Manhattan.
How well do you know about Sammy Smith?
Very well.
You served with him on the board of directors of Alloso Land Service Company?
I do.
And so he paved your road, and it goes right up to your driveway, or does it go past your driveway, or?
No, Mr. Humble, it doesn't go up to my driveway, it goes down the road to the first county bridge.
And what was the criteria for Sammy paving your road, Mr. Smith?
I offered a rational explanation for paving that portion of the road. I told him that by paving two-tenths of a mile of county road, that he would take care of over fifty percent of the people that live on that county road.
So he took that into...
And he took that into consideration, and he came back in a couple of weeks, and he said he was gonna do it.
It had nothing to do with you being a close friend of Sammy Smith and paving your road?
No. I asked him to go out and check other roads in the county, to see if other roads could meet that same standard. Could he pave two-tenths of a mile and take care of over fifty percent of the people that live on any county road? And he checked, and he couldn't.
Do you have any children, Mr. Justin?
No.
The school bus picks up or anything?
No, no, no.
Is it a bus route? Well, I just, is it a bus route?
That's still a lot of life, you know. It has been in the past. When there were children down the road.
And is this where this is going to end, or is this just discussion?
Yes. I mean, no opinions expressed in this letter are the opinions of Commissioners Court. This is Gary's letter.
Of course.
We didn't say this, did we?
No, I know that. I know that. No, I'm just saying, because nobody was saying anything, so we could now put it to an end, put it to the end, and then somebody is going to be in the discussion.
Okay.
Gary, you brought up a wide range of subjects in there.
Because of the lack of control and administration by our Road and Bridge Administrator.
One of them, one of them being that Commissioners have no function with the Road Administrator. Well, as a Commissioner, I get called by my constituents, and they ask me to go look at a road and get something done about it. I go out and look at it, I report to Jeffrey and tell him, I write up the report, whatever it is. So I have to tell them to call him also. So I do work with him, and...
And that's proper?
That's proper?
Yes.
Well, the way I understood that, it didn't have...
You should be talking to the Road and Bridge Administrator. All of the Commissioners should be talking to him. But he is in charge.
All right, he's in charge. Okay, I do realize that...
And if he doesn't perform his, if he doesn't perform his duties, then you should do something about it.
We need some...
Please stick into the agenda items.
Let's, let's, uh...
We're not sticking to the agenda items.
I do, I do realize, we need some additional things done. And in the past, there wasn't enough funding to do things sufficiently. He was a road, he just very bad, he got some very bad roads he took over. And I thought about it. I've had a lot of people tell me he needs to be replaced. I said, "Well, we need to give him a chance now that we've got some money and budget for him." So, that's my opinion right now. We do need some improvements. I agree with a lot of things that you said.
Okay, can we move on?
We are off the...
Well, that's what our legal counsel's for. We use him for that. So can we move on now? Are we done with that? I mean, are we okay? I mean, does anybody else have any discussion that they want to add, if any agreements, Road and Bridge Administration? Okay, if somebody up there wants to talk, please, we're going to depend on Mr. Bustman for legal advice.
I think he's a videographer today.
He's a videographer. He's going to do dual service today.
Bob, can you, can you answer legal questions and videotape at the same time?
Yeah.
He's a multitasker today. Flag mover, videographer. Uh, the next item on the agenda is going to be to discuss, approve, disapprove, the new exemption of goods in transit, local option to tax goods that are stored in a public warehouse owned by someone other than the owner of goods, and to allow the county officials to execute approved. And that's Ms. Frankie, and she has, Mr. Banks here, our, our...
Delegated attorney.
Delegated tax attorney.
Property attorney.
Property tax attorney. We have delegated attorney, delegated property, but I might have worded this wrong. You might need to lead me in the right direction. I might have misunderstood, and so tell me... You can explain to us, tell us what we need to do.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
What I wanted to emphasize first is, and it's good that you have it on the agenda, it's going to be a discussion item today. And then after we finish the discussion, you may or may not decide to have it back on the agenda before December 31st. What we're talking about is, in the most recent legislative session, the goods in transit exemption was amended. And what it, the author of the legislation, this most recent amendment, was really concerned about competition up on the Texas-New Mexico border, where New Mexico was not taxing business, personal property, furniture, fixtures, equipment, the non-dirt tax accounts. And so, they wanted to try and improve the competitive edge of Texas warehouse facilities. So what they did was they targeted with this legislation, goods that are, and primarily employees, that are stored in a public warehouse for less than 175 days. And it's a narrow application, or it's a narrow area of goods that are covered, but it's significant that we talk about it because the legislation is a little reversed in that if you don't take action, there's going to be an exemption that will take place. If you take action, you're going to continue to tax goods that you currently tax. Right now, these same goods, and it's probably, I'm not certain about the amount, and I don't think that throughout the state, it's easy to put a handle on how much goods are stored in public...